So, it's, it bends. And the houses are right there. There's no reason for anyone to drive faster than twenty miles an hour. That actually feels fast.
It does, but the speed limit is thirty.
No, that's fine, well.
Technically, it is.
Is that right?
Yeah. I mean, I go twenty-five in the city, but it's thirty throughout the city.
Well, that's something we could change, do that. Because that's ridiculous. I would never drive through a neighborhood with houses on either side at thirty miles an hour.
Okay, but then there, there's another problem, because if we do a s- a study on that, then they take seventy percentile, is that right? We did this once already, it was a seventy percent.
Yeah, I think we've already looked into doing the twenty-five miles an hour, and I, Jason could correct me if I'm wrong.
It was a seventy percentile, right?
I think it's, you have to have special permission from the state and...
Eighty. So it was eighty-five percentile, so let's say eighty-five percent of those cars are doing forty, now they can raise their speed. So it's kind of, it's ridiculous.
Until recently, we were all, we were, it was all run by the state. The state would some come into your town and say what the speed limit's gonna be, even though they probably never even stepped foot in the town.
Sure. Yeah, and I, that is, actually, the state statute is residential streets in these, you know, ninety-nine percent of the city's streets are thirty mile an hour. That's the state requirement. We don't even need signs because that's the law.
Right.
And just recently, they at least made it a physical thing that can be evaluated to see if we could try and reduce the speeds, and we've talked about it.
The problem with evaluation, though, is, is that eighty-five percent, if eighty per, eighty-five percent of that traffic is doing thirty-five, forty miles an hour, well, then they can say, well, guess what? We're raising it. We're not lowering it.
Well, that would, I would guarantee that personally. But at any rate, you, you yourself admitted that it's gonna be a mistake, and it literally...
But I'm not gonna bankrupt, I'm not gonna bankrupt a guy.
Well, the land is the land. It can be, it can be developed in a different way.
I don't think that's the case. I mean, we've already talked to him about that, and I think you're, you're absolutely correct. I think this is, we've already, we've already taken it, and we've made these lots bigger, and so that they weren't so small, like Steve was saying. So that's obviously cost him money under the development side. And then if you try to make a turnaround, and there's some way, I mean, it's gonna cut out a lot of houses, and we've already heard him say that it's, it's either bankruptcy or, or, uh, you know, or he does this, so.
I don't know.
I mean, I guess that's the...
I hate to sound callous, but bankruptcy is a lot better than...
So when, when you moved into your house, and you knew that there was gonna be potential development down that road, you're okay with another individual who's got...
I as, I assume there would be another location for people coming in and out.
But I mean, when, when you bought that, I'm just gonna ask you, I mean, when you bought that house, I mean, you knew that there was gonna be future development, you're okay with somebody who's probably got a family, probably got children, and he can go bankrupt because, well, I know when I bought the house, it was gonna get developed, but now I don't want it anymore. I mean, that's...
It's not about the development or the people that come, that are coming in there.
But there is no option, there, there is no option right now. He doesn't own that property next to him. He can't get an exit out of there, so.
I am not, I am not, I am not BSing any of you to tell you I've exhausted everything.
It's a major failure of government, and someone should take the hit for it.
Um, you could, have you, has anybody talking to the county? Who's controlling that exit? That we don't have control over. Has anybody went to a county board meeting?
I did. I did, but boy, it sure would put some ammo behind it if residents did.
You'd have a lot more say than we do.
Yes, you would.
At the county, what's that?
Before this gets way out of line, okay? So, again, I'm Zach Gaines, one thousand Wendover, that's my wife, she's beautiful. But...
She is.
I have to lighten this up a little bit. And there's, first of all, we thought that we were going through the process that we needed to go through. Starting with the planning commission, to then to the city council meeting, knowing that it was a three to three vote to go through to this meeting. So, I don't think it was ever notified to us to then approach the county to do it that way. And if, and if I would've been aware of that, I would've been at the next county board meeting.
I'm sure you would've.
Okay, so...
That's why I asked if anybody approached county.
Yeah, so I...
Which Councilman Collison was absent, if you recall, so.
Yes, I was absent.
There goes my absent voice.
So, I, I wanna make sure that, like, that process, we would've collused that. I think the other piece, too, is that what we're trying to get at as, as this point is inventive. Is that I understand, like, you took that little plot, that was the, and you twisted it around to see if there's no... But then I heard Mr. Cook say that if that little, little plot at the end finally does get sold, that they would have to have some type of road access. So that leads me to believe that then we could have the county at that point sometime now, and have an access where it's supposed to be.
Correct.
Okay?
But that would lie on the next developer, Zach.
Exactly, so...
Not this one.
This brings me back to my point. This was all owned by Iverson in two thousand and six. The whole piece was owned by Iverson. And so when you had the fairway greens that went left and right, and left and right, that went, that got parceled out, it was all owned by one person. So then we knew that it was gonna happen. And then when it took a crap, and everything fell apart, then all those pieces got bought by the people. And so now we're then handcuffed with having to have this imaginary parcel that's up on top of the hill, and then someday having it, having an outlet out there. That we don't even know if the county would approve it or not. And so that's the problem, is that we might have residents back here for the next thirty, forty, fifty plus years, never having an outlet. And that means you have three issues. You have a busting issue, where you have to walk all those kids from the back. They have to walk all the way up to Eighth Avenue, because you're not bringing a bus all the way back there. You have a fire issue, for the fact that even the fire chief wrote a letter of concern for that area, back when this was plotted. And then you have the traffic issue. So you have three issues at that point, where then why can't we slow down? I get the fact that he's trying to develop this, but we know that the golf course is already sold. We know that that's gonna get plotted out in a different fashion. And so let's slow down, have the developers at that point talk, and figure out how we can parcel things together at that point. Or go back to the county, and let me and the, and our citizens back here on Wendover plead our case to the county. That's just a pause. That's all it is. We pause all the time in government. I work in big government. I work for the Department of Corrections. We pause all the time. And so at that point, let us go back and plead to the county and see if, hey, why can't we work something on, our citizens want an outlet there? That's all we're asking for. Be inventive at that point. Have a pause. And I know there's some other members back here that might wanna talk, but those are our issues. That's what we got. We're not here to argue with you.
I wouldn't be opposed, opposed to giving them, uh, postponing the...
When is our next county meeting?
To give them a...
Mr. Waring?
Commissioner Waring.
Yes, tomorrow morning, nine a.m. Now, it's not on the agenda, so the only thing you'll be able to, you have a public copy, two minutes. You can speak with two minutes on it. Uh, just go back around the commission, my couple copies of this development, two engineer, uh, one of the people that you're interested to check with. It would require wherever it goes along the avenue, a right turn lane, a left turn lane going, uh, eastbound. Also has to be a street, it can't be a temporary. So it requires those things, and that's another coordinate that may not have been assessed somewhere. So those are, those are part of the problems, but as of right now, the engineer, since we don't have the budget for this home, then you are welcome. You're up to the meeting. Can I ask you a question?
It would be more formal if I could ask to have this put on the agenda, so then all the board members would then have, have a notice on that, and then we can actually... Because that, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, trying to figure that out with more schedules and things like that.
You could do it on the agenda that, in that short notice, I don't share the board, so.
You'd have, you'd have to wait till the following meeting then, Zach.
Next month? The, the following board meeting, not tomorrow, but...
It'll be two weeks from tomorrow, for that case.
So you, you could ask them to put it on their agenda two weeks from tomorrow?
Does that, does that work, Commissioner Waring? Is that what?
That would work.
Commissioner, does it need to go to your committee of the whole first, for an agenda request?
No, the agenda request, no, we haven't had it. We'll have to find out. Uh, we should talk to the county administrator. I think we'll, we'll, we'll do it tomorrow, and see where we stand on that. Uh, but you certainly have to call the county administrator's office. Uh, you can also call the county engineer's office. There's your, speaking, you know, you're, you're actually lying, um, it isn't feasible, I don't know. We all, and I can't promise anything, because it's, that's gonna be, like I said, a hard one to do. That's time to be in our budget. Over the years, we've started on selecting four houses, and I don't know if it can be assessed to that area, from the county, because... We allow a purpose, but you certainly have to, to, uh, call the, uh, office. And I really want my, but, and, yes, we can get it off each other.
I mean, he's, he still doesn't own the property that, no.
No, but toward that outlet would be, would come out to a...
So let me ask you this. Is it gonna hurt you to pause?
Certainly doesn't help. There is damages to pausing, you know? Leaving things sit always has a cost to it, you know? Said, you know, could you afford to leave your house empty for a month? You know, yeah, there's costs. You still have bills, you still have things that are costs. Um, there's still planning, we're, we're running tight on time for the end of the year. We could push things to next year, you know, waiting a couple of weeks. And then that couple of weeks might be where you need that for asphalt, or you need that for concrete. We have early winter, and so do I know that it's absolutely necessary? I don't know, but then it could push things into next year, the market could change, and surprisingly, two weeks could end up costing a million dollars. I don't know, you know, if I'm not a, I don't have a crystal ball. But I wouldn't like to roll the dice for something that really just should've been done the last two weeks, and if it wasn't done, it's... I mean, I'm, I'm the only one that pays that price to get more time.
You could, unfortunately, you can see the situation we're in. I mean, we wanna keep our residents happy, and I want them to understand, I feel for them, I honestly do. It's a bad situation that now has come to a head, and we're trying to do everything we can.
It's not even your doing, it's not even our doing. I mean, it was done, it was done well before us, so I mean...
This was done when Iverson did this. It was done in Iverson's original start of this.
So this, it's kind of a hiccup, to better put it, I guess.
I guess I have a question for our engineer. If you were to, if you were the county engineer looking at this plot, what lots would you say that, if, if they were ever to have an exit out on the five from Wendover, what, what lots would you think that they would use?
I mean, the county's not gonna be too concerned about which lots are, that physical thing, it'd be keeping the entrances as far apart as possible.
Right, but I'm just looking...
It's actually the kind of hit to that.
Their property ends at the backside of their lots. So, if you were to go, like, if, if you're looking at, like, lot, like, basically nine to the north, um, that, that's your property line there, they're not gonna be able to have an exit out that side, correct?
Right, yeah, it'd have to be on the frontage, on the, on the road.
So it'd be like between, let's say, like, fourteen to eleven, somewhere in there?
Sure.
Would be the furthest away from eighth? Um...
Even if they'll Councilman Collison, they'd still have to go talk to the county.
Exactly, but I'm just wondering if the developer would leave those lots alone for now? Go ahead, start doing everything else.
Start around the rest of it.
Leave those lots alone for now, in case the county sees maybe in a year, it gets feasible? Or, you know, because I believe Mike was mentioning, it was like four million, with the requirements that need to be set in place, turn lanes and things, correct?
Uh, well, uh, uh, quarter million.
Oh, quarter million, I'm sorry.
But it has to be a street, so that would have to become a street layout.
Right.
We don't put in temporary...
Correct. That's why I'm just, I'm asking...
The city would also have to, to, uh, some of them would have to be connected.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking if that would be, what's your professional opinion? Um, if, what's the builder's opinion on that? Leaving those lots untouched until maybe there's some hope down the road? You know, if not, obviously, you're gonna build houses there.
I'd definitely be open to that, to leaving them open and giving the first right of review to the county.
So you're letting them, so what you're saying is let them slowly start, leaving them lots alone?
No, just start as development and, and not develop like eleven and twelve, say, or eleven, or whatever.
Then on how wide a road would be, if, you could probably answer you that, that question, with right of ways and everything, you'd have to, then you'd know what lots. But would you be willing to have that exit there and lose those, say, three, possibly four lots, whatever it would be?
What's the minimum width, width in a road, Jason?
To, to, to satisfy the neighbors.
I would love to, but I don't know if that would be feasible, or it changes things, you know, I didn't, I didn't have to study that. No, you know, I could leave them open, that if the county did wanna approve a road there, and that's open, that would be available for purchase. But to go into the development and say, you know, you're really gonna develop part of it, it's, uh, it's a tough thing, or if I changed my mind right from the beginning, you know, you can't, uh...
Would you be willing to look into it, though?
You can't do things halfway. I mean, of course, I'd look at anything, I just don't know if it's gonna fit the budget, and I feel waiting for the county's answers. I mean, they, they said no once, they said no twice, waiting a couple of weeks for them to say no.
No, I'm not saying, I don't think you're gonna build on those lots in a couple of weeks.
No, no, I, I'd leave them open, but I don't think they should be left undeveloped, you know, I think they should still be stopped out, they should still go as planned. And if something changed in the plan, of course, I would take a look and I'd, I'd readdress it.
Jason, what's the minimum, minimum street width?
To connect to the county?
Yeah.
I guess, I don't know off the top of my head, but most likely a thirty-six foot street.
How, how wide, how wide is eleventh, that lot eleven going into that street to, uh, to, uh, the Wendover Street? Do you know?
The frontage?
The frontage.
Uh, obviously, it's a pie, kind of pie shape, but...
That'd be the engineer question, I bet.
Yeah, I don't know how to talk like that, I should actually look up.
But it's gotta be more than thirty feet?
Yes.
So, so you, we could just, we could physically say, leave lot eleven as a, as a possible street, if the county's gonna allow it. I, I, I'm, I'm sure we could at some point, somehow, get the county to, to go along with knowing that if, if they're gonna get this, you know, turn lanes put in, we name it a street, chances are it's gonna be, the only, the only hurdle we're gonna have is who's gonna pay that quarter of a million dollars assessment.
Right, I guess to add to that, it's not just those turn lanes for the county road, it'll be the additional street connecting over. So, you know, now we're talking three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that the city would either have to decide to participate, or usually that would go to the developer. And so it'd just be adding that much to the developer's cost, unless the city wants to participate. But, you know, I guess that's the other piece of the puzzle. Uh, also, we're finalizing the plan right here, and so we wanna try and switch that, trying to fit exactly into one single lot, would probably be pretty funky for how the intersection would end up turning out, even as it is, without modifying it. So, uh, I would just, like, that topic of trying to proceed, but then think it's possibly gonna happen later? It's gonna be, you're gonna wanna figure out how you're gonna handle that significant cost before it really goes anywhere. But the fact that there's even the possibility is, you know, not what we just heard from the county engineer today, I guess, is, uh...
But then again, that was probably, with his assumption, it was going to be a temporary, so...
Ms. Elman, you have something to say?
Yeah, so if we were looking at, Jason, if we're looking at possibly changing that, let's just say we get, we agree, and we get that to be an access, wouldn't there be additional de, right of way dedication along there, so all those lots along? Would they, how would they go about doing that? It would just be on his development, or there'd be additional right of way possibly dedicated? So that changes that lot layout as well, and then, like you said, then the cost, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the county's right of way width is, and whether the room for the turn lanes exists, whether there'd have to be easements and, you know, land acquisition and ditches and all that. You know, that's why they had that restriction, so that it was a no-go, so.
It would be, uh, versus the property, because it has to go quite best, because of the two tons of...
Sure.
I don't know how much right of way it would be. Our standard road is sixty-six feet from the center, uh, in each direction. Two, uh, things along. Uh, I revise the bigger, more travel, and I don't have the exact number, but I want to... But again, I don't know for sure, so, engineers would have to...
That's county road, not city road.
That's the county thing.
Never to, to your department.
It would have to, on that part, turn lanes and all, but then also the city would have to pick up on some line, the street coming to the county.
So again, it's the question of pausing. I mean, I, I don't, uh, I, I feel these residents' pain, I do, I feel your pain. But meeting halfway, so I've exhausted everything that I can do. I, I've tried, and I've tried since the last time we've seen each other. And every avenue and alley that I've traveled, I've come up empty-handed. Um, pausing, it's not a bad idea. Speed bumps, I thought of that one, but, um...
I think Council, Councilman Collison has the best idea so far.
I don't know if it's feasible, I'm just talking out loud, you know, trying to find maybe a last minute...
Maybe we just pick three lots, and say, don't develop these three lots, so we get an answer from the county.
But then again, who's gonna pay for it?
Yeah.
That's...
Well, we would have to figure all that out later, too. I get that portion, I would, I get...
And he doesn't know, he doesn't know if he can move forward without those three lots either, he...
I think he can.
I would lose, I think he'd get by losing just one lot, because that's thirty street, thirty feet is a street right of way. And that lot's gotta be more than thirty feet wide in the front. It has to be.
Yeah, I mean, if it's only, if it's only one lot there, maybe you could get rid of a country club, maybe you could put the other, you know, something else where that country club road is, I suppose, but, I don't know, it's...
Yeah, I guess technically, I was thinking, you were asking what the actual road width is. The right of way that the city has is sixty feet.
Yeah, but that lot's gotta be more than sixty feet wide, a street, it's gotta be.
No.
It can't be, it can't be less than that.
It could be. I mean, some of them are pretty narrow.
Nah, it, it, it can't be, though.
I know, the only thing we're pausing is that one lot, that's all we're asking for. I mean, he's not gonna develop all those lots in two weeks, or four weeks, whatever it takes.
Well, then I'd lean on Wendover and ask if they, that would... I mean, and still in two weeks, you're, you could go to the county and speak your piece, by all means. I, I would encourage you to do that. But is, is having him pause on one lot and continue the rest, is, is that gonna...
There's no guarantees it's gonna work, but it's...
We're rolling the dice, but...
Is two weeks or thirty days going to adjust the sewer and the other development on those one or two lots? Is that, is a two-week or thirty-day pause acting a deal for what's coming in for the development? I don't, right, I can, if I'm not right, I can be back there in two weeks.
I think we keep on going forward as planned, and then I think, you know, there isn't gonna be a house there, certainly, in two weeks or thirty days, or...
Right, we're not actually, we're not actually...
Yes, I can make sure that that's absolutely last, and everything may not be else there by the end of the year. But I think just holding off on everything else, you know, when you get the delay and say, you know, hold off on this, and it puts everything on the line, is a significant problem.
So when do you plan on starting the development back there?
This is a colossal...
So...
Suppose you can't schedule anything until after tonight?
So we'll have...
Mayor, we need names and addresses, and...
We, yeah, we still would need you.
This is not, sorry, typically to do the, uh, backboard discussion.
You're more than welcome to come up, ma'am, if you'd like, and ask questions. If you guys don't mind, just take seats in the front row, so, because you're gonna get called upon again, too.
My name is Michelle Sanders, and I live in nine fifteen Wendover Street Northeast. So, I mean, it's, it's summertime, it's active neighborhoods, it's active kids. I have a four-year-old granddaughter that comes. That's what, that's part of our concerns with you guys coming in, and the whole traffic thing. Isn't there any other way you can find to put an outlet at one of the other streets that are down on Eighth Avenue?
The, the property's not owned by the city, it's owned by a developer, so that's where we're...
It's not owned by them either.
It's not owned by these guys either. So I mean, if it was, this would make it a whole heck of a lot easier, because we just ask them to put it in.
Because, because I feel like it's, I feel like it's our street that's being, like...
Targeted.
Targeted with all this, because there's other streets down there. Why can't you put an outlet on the other streets down there, too? Why is it just gotta be our street?
Because, again, the city doesn't own it, the developer don't own it, it's a different developer. I mean, we, we could, we could ask that developer, but they're probably gonna laugh at us. I believe we have asked the developer. So I mean, the way they answer us is why would we put anything in when we don't know how it's gonna develop? You know, they're, they're in a cramp...
Our children's lives...
I get it, I have kids of my own. So does Councilman Collison, so does Councilman Gordon, I mean, we get it.
I, I live on a very busy street, one of the busiest streets in the city.
My thing is, would you want me coming to your neighborhood and feeding the wrong in your neighborhood?
Well, that's a, actually, that's a citywide problem, and our PD is working...
Very hard.
Very hard to crack down on speakers.
They do come down my street. I live on Main Street, I'm, I'm on a very busy street, and they do it all day, every day. He, he lives in Dogwood, they do it all day, every day. He lives in Marion, they do it all day, every day. I mean, it, it's a citywide problem, ma'am, and, and we're trying our hardest to do what we can, and, and I'm sure the chief would be the first one to say, if he could have a cop everywhere at the same time, we'd all be happy.
When we are sitting outside and having neighbor fun, we are yelling at cars, please slow down, because they're pulling down so fast.
I do it, too.
I do it, too.
Go ahead, sir.
I live on nine hundred Wendover Street Northeast.
What's your name, sir?
Steve Sidlucky.
Thank you, Steve. Go ahead, sir.
I like you guys' idea of sectioning off maybe that eleven, twelve, and thirteen that is not developed, you know, as... And that's the main thing that we're talking about, having another outlet, even if it's possible that we come to the county. I think that is a fantastic idea, and I think, I know it's tough for the developer.
It would just be eleven, though, Steve, just so you know, just a lot.
I, we, initially, you guys said eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Just eleven would be...
Somewhere in between there.
Yeah.
Right, but it...
Depends on how wide that lot is.
Next, next thing you know, a lot eleven, oh, we developed twelve, and we developed ten, and next thing you know, we don't got enough room for a road.
Exactly.
So, ex, and that's the pinch we're in, right? Oh, all of a sudden, he built, so if we left the three, the three lots alone, like you guys initially said, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, it would put us in, at peace, you know, and like, hey, this actually can be a possibility. Because you know how it is, right? I don't know, I, I, I guess I, that's why I thought I'd jump in and say that, and I do live on nine hundred. I was, uh, one of the first to move in on the street, and I was told there was gonna be a city park on the other side of Eighth Avenue. And then, four years later, they're erecting apartments. So my, so I'm like, whoa, this was gonna, that, someone told, the, uh, the builder told me that it was gonna be a city park. Next thing you know, is apartment's being erected. Oh, and then another apartment being erected, right? And then it's like, whoa, I'm on the corner, these guys don't live right on the corner, right? I'm on the corner, I'm seeing all these cars coming in and out of the apartment complex. They don't see the apartment traffic. So they got all the apartment traffic coming in and out, and then I got forty more houses going up. When I built there, or, yeah, when we built, there was twenty-four houses. If they were gonna build again, I'm thinking, oh, the lots are gonna be nice and decent size, not, so it'd be, okay, twenty-four plus, maybe another twenty-four lot, twenty-four more on a L like that, right? But they're cramming not just twenty more, but forty, do you know what I mean? So if they were to take that same length road that we have now, that has our twenty houses on it, and put twenty more houses on it, I think we're, would be a lot more happier, too. But with that being said, um, I, I guess I would expect larger lots. Um, that's all been hashed out already. I just wanted to speak my mind, all right?
Thank you. Appreciate you, Steve.
One thing that some of you gotta understand, too, is the longer this, we delay the developer, like he said, the more it's gonna cost him. So, let me just take, for example, a house that started three months ago has cost over seventy thousand dollars more today than it did three months ago, just in lumber costs, not due to weather. Not due to weather, not due to anything else, other than the inflated cost of lumber and materials. What I do for a living, I'm a plumber. PVC pipe went up three hundred percent since a year ago. Three hundred percent. Who pays for that? You do as a consumer. So, when, when I say this, the longer we delay him, I would love to tell him, I want you to wait another month. But that month could cost him a half a million dollars, plain and simple. And I understand exactly where you're coming from. I don't live on one of the busier streets, but I got people whipping up and on the street all the time.
And that's our point. We don't live on a busy street, and we don't want it to be a busy street. We want it to be safe for our children and our grandchildren.
Go ahead, sir.
Tim Burbings, one thousand and six Wendover. I bought a house on a cul-de-sac, expecting... Tim Burbings, one thousand six Wendover. I bought a house on a cul-de-sac, expecting it to stay a cul-de-sac, and now it's not a cul-de-sac. It's, or it's not gonna be a cul-de-sac, they put a road through it. Um, I grew up on a cul-de-sac, I watched seventy-five houses get put up all around me, and never once did it impede on our cul-de-sac. And there were many other cul-de-sacs put in there, and I don't understand why I can't let my children grow up the same way I did. I really, I'm sorry, I'm callous, whatever, I don't care about the, the developer and his costs or whatever, I just know there's gotta be somewhere else, some other way they can put a road in and not impede on our lifestyle. Every single person here bought a house on a cul-de-sac. I've seen houses in a, in a to-be-developed area, it's not a cul-de-sac, it's a dead-end road blocked off to be determined for a road through. This is a cul-de-sac, this, I mean, there's gotta be another route for these people to go, be, and I know you've exhausted all your options, and that's.
Didn't the guy that.
I appreciate that, but this was not, I didn't buy my property thinking that this was going to be eventually a road. It was a frickin' cul-de-sac, and it's still a cul-de-sac, so if it was, you know, if you go over one street down, they've got a dead-end road with a big barrier on it. Why? Because they're gonna develop someday, and it's gonna be a through road. So I would, I tell you right now, I would not have bought my house if it was like that. Or at least I would've gone in knowing that it was going to be a, a road. I bought it specifically to be on a cul-de-sac for my children and my family's safety. That's, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't the guy at the end of that cul-de-sac, isn't that his development, that whole block?
He's the builder.
He's the builder.
Now, he's not.
He sold it to the.
He sold it, now he's moving.
Because he saw what was going on.
No, he sold it to them because he couldn't help himself. So he sold it to these guys.
I'm.
Get him out.
Put your mic down, buddy, so we can hear you. Say your name and your address, young man.
My name is Alexandra Bynton, um, I live on Wendover Street Northeast.
What's your, what's your home address, buddy?
Um, nine, nine twelve.
Okay.
Um, Michelle does have a four-year-old granddaughter, and I do play with her, but, and we cross the street and we go play at her house, but, and I don't want her to get, get hit, and I don't wanna get hit, just, just why can't it be on a different road?
Good job. Nobody wants any kids to get hit.
No.
That's not what any of us are, are up here saying, so.
No. Thanks for coming up.
I want one more thing, sorry, I, I know we've exhausted this thing, but I just, like, if I would've known that I had to go to the county, I would've went to the county first. And I, and I, and I don't, and, and I don't need to be taught an economics lesson, but if, if that's the case, and we have hope to do it that way, and, and if we can get it all but put in there, that's been my battle this entire time. You guys know all this. Well, you don't, you do it down there. But it's, let us have the chance to have that, to have that discussion with the county. That's all we're asking.
We didn't say anything the first round, because I, I was honest with you by saying I was gonna exhaust everything that I could do. And.
But he's telling me that we have a chance.
Well, he, he's saying.
I'm just saying, you can bring it up.
Yeah.
That's all, that's all we're saying, is, is that.
You just wanted an opportunity.
And, and we don't know where this is gonna stop.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm.
It's already a problem, and, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but we already know that this is trash.
What I'm saying, Zach, is I didn't lie to anybody when I said I was gonna exhaust everything.
I didn't say you can't.
Well, somebody did, and that's the way I'm gonna take it. So, let, let me finish. So with that being said, is I exhausted everything that I could do, every avenue, every street, every alley, everything that I could do, I've exhausted it. So now, this is why I have council members, because we all have different mindsets, we all think different, we all, I might forget. I mean, I sit up here and have to facilitate a meeting and try to keep calm in this room, which is hard to do, as you may see at times, but thank God Council McCollison was, "Hey, what about county? Thanks for reminding me." Or, you know what, better yet, thanks for saying it for me. Because that is the only avenue you can travel. I'm not saying there's hope there, Zach, but I'm not saying there's not, either. That, that's a possibility, but the county is a lot different than the city.
But what I'm saying is, if you guys approve it right now, it's a death. Like, there's no chance, then we can't go back and fix it. So if we approve and they essentially start building those lots out, then we can't go back and fix the mistake that we already know that's been created here. And so if we are living in a dynamic place that, that's here, we have citizens here that, that are, that are telling you that we wanna fix this, we're not trying to stop it. We know it's gonna get developed. We just want a chance to fix the problem before it gets worse. And, and we can fit, and we can correct the fire problems, the busing issues, and, and some of the traffic. That's it.
So Zach, how do you feel about what we're talking about pausing lots, eleven or eleven, twelve, and thirteen, or whatever we come up with here?
I, I, I find it as a creative solution, but the, the concern I'm having, I think we expected him to say, sorry, he's probably a little, he's left my home. Is essentially, would that hurt him as far as then, if the county then says, "No, we can only do it in this section," and then he has to replod it? Because then now he has to come back to you and.
Yeah, and replod it by the city engineer.
So that's the bigger problem, is that if we hold maybe three lots, and then the county says, "Well, we can do it, but we had to do it on this, on this piece," and now he has to go get it replotted, then he's in a situation with that. I think that's a great solution, but then all of a sudden, he might end up with a dead lot half that he has, and I don't want, I wouldn't wanna do that to him either. So I'm not, like I said, I'm not out here to, to fight against these guys. I'm just trying to come up with a creative solution to try to fix this.
I don't know, I'm, I think we should pause the, maybe three lots and then move forward.
So we have, tomorrow is the county board.
Or you could go in two weeks from tomorrow.
Possibly get on.
You won't get on the agenda.
You, you wouldn't get on.
You could go try and speak at the public.
Forseably, we could get on the agenda for the following meeting.
You, if you, if somebody went tomorrow, even if you did or you didn't go tomorrow, if you went tomorrow, though, you'd go on public comment.
Agenda for two weeks from tomorrow.
Which you don't have to go to tomorrow's meeting to get on the agenda.
But if anybody could.
For two weeks from tomorrow, what is the following city council meeting? Can we find that date and pause to that date?
It's the June sixteenth?
No, that.
That sounds totally.
No, it wouldn't, it'd be a week af, it'd be a week after our next council meeting. So that puts it into July.
It'd be July sixth.
July sixth. So I guess that would be, that would, I understand that that would be a large ask, but I don't think that that's unreasonable.
Here, here's my problem, is, is I feel, I feel the pain of the residents, I feel the pain of the developer. The residents have kids, well, the developer has kids, too. So now we're potentially taking food off of his table. So where do we meet halfway here?
Right, but we already know, we've already conceded that this is a huge mistake, so we should at least give it a month to see if we can.
The problem is, is we're already giving it a month.
We, we've given it a month now, now we're giving it two months.
Planning Commission, the first time. When this was, when this first went through for approval, was over a month ago. Month and a half ago, two months ago?
No, it was a month ago.
That was two weeks.
No, the very first time it went through.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah, Planning Commission was two weeks ago.
When it first came through, before we had the public hearing and they brought this in.
No, this has not been before the public hearing. You're probably thinking Fair Greens North, this is Fair Greens South. So the first time that this body here has seen it was at the public hearing at the planning commission.
Which was two weeks ago.
Otherwise, you probably are remembering that you saw it in twenty fourteen.
Probably.
Where we get confused is Fairway North, Fairway South, Fairway East, Fairway West, we get.
But it, it, it.
I just don't think that it's unreasonable.
Let me, let me, let me just, I'm playing devil's advocate, and please don't misinterupt this when I say this. I'm gonna ask you not to make your house payment for another month and a half.
Say that one more time?
I'm gonna ask you not to make your house payment for another month and a half. How, where does that put you at? That's, this is what, I'm, I'm looking at this as, the more we delay him.
I could not work for six months and still make my mortgage payments.
Well, and, and I, and.
I'm not asking him to not feed his family.
But I'm just, what I'm just saying is.
Us as a whole, as a group, to consider the safety of the children who are going to be living there, not only the ones that are living there.
My, my point is, then you missed, don't make your house payment for a month and a half. I don't care if you can afford it or not. That's not the point. The point is to do something that you shouldn't do, okay, is what I'm getting at. You're asking him to shell out two million dollars and sit and wait for another, for another six weeks.
Make pound mistake after mistake, or should we take.
So we should make, so should we make more and more, as, as you just seen.
Government's MO, let's throw more money upon money and see if we can break the problem.
That's, you're, you're missing, you're missing my point.
I think a month is not too much to ask. That is literally the crux of my point at the moment.
This is a lot different than any other government, too, just for the record.
Yeah.
I think this.
I'm not loving giving it to all governments, but yeah, where it starts.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, are, are we done with the public comments, so I can put in some staff comments?
Sure. If there's nobody else that's gonna step up, yes?
So one of the things that we talked about is putting this on pause, that's something that you certainly can do, you can postpone to the next meeting, that's definitely your prerogative to do that. Um, we talk about, right now, we're looking at phlegmarium final plat. So if you approve the final plat tonight with all these lots, that's the way it's approved, that's the way it will be developed. If you wanna take out lots eleven, twelve, thirteen, whatever the numbers you were saying, that's not what's proposed for you tonight. So those would have to become outlots or something else, not part of this development. And you may have to look at what, what are you having, are you having dedicated as right-of-way, are you purchasing it? What's gonna happen with those lots if we take it out and then the county doesn't allow it? Because right now, those lots before you are looking to be planted as lots of record. So if we're going to take those out of this subdivision, then we need to do that. It cannot be shown as lots eleven, twelve, thirteen, maybe it'll be a road. Can't do it that way, that's not legally how you do it. You actually have to take it out of the plant.
Can we add it back in later, then?
Yeah, they would have to apply again, because it would be an outlot, they'd have to apply, and they would be doing another subdivision, it'd go through the same process.
And they're paying more money.
Yes.
But they're also being allowed to move forward to the other, other lots, though, too. I think that's a fair compromise. I mean, I'm not, I, I get it, we're asking someone to spend more money, but.
So if we approve this tonight, you're, you're saying that he couldn't, like, in a, two months from now, or whatever, put in a street?
Well, right now, it's not planted that way. Right now, the street is Wendover cul-de-sac, extension to another cul-de-sac as one, so that's not planted right-of-way. So if you were going to use those lots as right-of-way, they'd have to plant it as right-of-way, dedicated as right-of-way, meet minimum requirements.
I think, I think delaying this is, is, uh, is a must. That's my opinion. But how do we do it? Legally, I guess I would have to lean on Ms. Solomon.
That would be, you would make the motion to delay it, you would say what meeting day you're delaying it to, why you're delaying it, and you do have the right to do that because of the age of the action deadline.
So I will make the motion to delay this to the July sixth meeting. And let the residents go to the county. Let's see if that is feasible for eleven, twelve, thirteen, for the county to blaze a road through that. And if so, then we'll meet with the developer and, and do what we have to do from there forward. But let's at least give the community a standing leg to fight on.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the county, let's just clarify, though, the county would not be putting that road through.
Right.
Born on the developer or the city?
But what I'm saying is to see if the county could, if the cities, if the city and the developer were gonna meet halfway at that, or, or, we'll figure something out. But we need the county on board to get that, that road to be connected to something that's gonna make sense.
But that doesn't mean it's going to happen, though.
It doesn't mean that's gonna happen, but at least we're giving the residents till July sixth to go to that county meeting and see if that's possible. We're giving the residents a fighting chance. And the only thing that I would ask is if you go to that meeting and there isn't a fighting chance and the county shoots it down, then what? Are we gonna be right back here doing the same rigmarole, or are we just gonna say, "Listen, we, we know what it is, it is what it is, we, we've exhausted everything, I have, you have." We're still on the same page, we're still on.
If we exhausted everything, why are we talking about lots eleven, twelve, and thirteen as a possibility?
Well, that's if the county's.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so.
But what if it comes back, though, that eleven, twelve, thirteen's not feasible, we can't make that road through there, we can't connect, then we're back at square one.
Or what if it comes back that he can't afford to do the whole development because we took out those three? I mean, there's not that much.
That's my fear.
In this business, I mean.
That's my fear. So me delaying this guy to July sixth, I'd rather not see him be delayed anymore. So if it comes back, July sixth, that that is not feasible, I would like to thumbs up this guy and say, "Hey, keep those trucks going through there slowly, keep it as minimal as possible." And I believe he would do it because he's a family man, just like the rest of us in this room.
Mayor, you're asking us a question and I respond?
Our public hearing is over now.
No, no, you're, you're asking us a question, but I'm just asking, then, then if the county then says, without researching and go through, if we convince them to start taking a look at that, you gotta give us time to have the county respond.
We'll come to that if that happens. You are correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that.
If there's a light on in the door.
If there's a light on in the door, then we will, we will grab the developer and we will meet with the county and we'll make it work.
And I would recommend if anybody could make the meeting tomorrow and at least speak in the, try and speak in the public.
For two minutes, you guys get two minutes in that meeting tomorrow, and the county's gonna hold that to the T.
You'll get the bug in their ears started, make some phone calls with the county engineer way before that county board.
Get yourself on the agenda for their meeting in two weeks from tomorrow, and then go in there and you could all have the same pow-wow we're having right now. And if they push it forward and say this is feasible, then we need to meet with the developer, with the county, and we'll figure it out. We, we have to. But if, if there's no light at the end of that tunnel, I, I'm, I'm hoping Wendover doesn't stall this man any more than we already have.
I think we get that, I think we just wanted to drop.
Okay.
You know, I think it's very tough for me going over it, kinda hearing that again, that everyone wants to go over it, but we're just asking to go over it the same thing a third time, which is basically a dozen for me. And so, I mean, I'm very interested to approve it.
Well, what, what we're saying, though, we're, I'm saying you're gonna pause on eleven, twelve, thirteen. You're not gonna touch those three lots.
They were not able to do any action on anything. If you postpone this to the July sixth meeting, he can't do anything. The plat will not be approved this evening, which means he can't start on anything.
Okay.
Well, Jason, you, you said that the, the lot that's hid not his, that's part of a separate development agree, or it's not any development agreement, it's not part of this agreement. So I mean, that, right now, the county has already put in place that they're not gonna put an access off of this area, right? I mean, that was why they had the, the, the pushback when we asked them and we approached them originally, was because they said that the original agreement, there was not gonna be an exit onto five out of this development.
It's going further down five.
Right, but I mean, there's the lot, the area that he does not own, that's not part of this original plan. So this has always been the original plan like this.
Since twenty fourteen.
Since twenty fourteen, this has always been the plan. So, and, and the lot that's not his, that is not part of that plan. So the county wouldn't already have a pre-existing agreement that that couldn't be an access point there, right?
Correct.
And that's why I think that's the best option, is probably still just to approve it as is, and, and then push to, to maybe, you know, have, I mean, hopefully, maybe that property owner will develop it, or hopefully, you know, maybe they could work something out there, or, I don't know. But maybe the county could buy that property and, and put a road through, you know, maybe that's what they can go and ask the county to do for them, is, you know, buy the right-of-way and, and put the access through there. I think that would be a better thing for the residents to go and approach the county, that, that the county buys that right-of-way and puts that access point versus we delay this.
And again, I would really not expect the county to involve more or less any money, you know? Any of these developments, any of these different options are gonna be, the developer or the city is gonna be spending the money. Whether or not they're, you know, do, become agreeable to do, you know, waive their, you know, restricted control they already have, it's gonna cost us. Whether or not they're, you know, do, become agreeable to do, you know, waive their, you know, restricted control they already have, it's gonna cost the same there versus further out, but either way, it's gonna be a developer, or the city, taking that cost.
Yeah, but regardless, the, the county's not gonna wanna put up the money for it, but at least if they can get the access to it, but, but... I really don't think we should delay this.
I just wanna be clear, is there any way of delaying 11, 12, and 13? You said there is no way, is that what you said, Ms. Selman?
Uh, well, no, because right now, it, before you is the plat including those, so if you didn't want to include those lots, you'd have to pull them out of the plat and create that as an outlot, and they'd have to re-engineer the whole thing, re-grade everything, so that you can have those be outlots and preserve for later.
And then he bites the cost.
One of the residents bites the cost, the rest of the village, there?
Or he doesn't finish this development this year, and by the time he gets to building next year, there's no market, there's no, nobody wants to buy a house. I mean, this market is so overinflated right now, I mean, the delay, the delay could be catastrophic for the city and for, and not just for him personally, but for the city and for the taxpayers of the city. If this development doesn't get done, that's, what are we, I mean, 45 new houses that are not on the tax base, so that's not a risk that I don't think we should take.
What do you think of doing, about pausing 11, 12, and 13 like Ms. Selman said?
I, I couldn't afford to start, so I'd be pausing the whole thing, you know, if that's-
I'm not saying the whole thing, I'm saying-
Well, that's what's gonna happen. We're gonna, if we delay this, we delay this whole project. But now, if, there, there's no way that it's feasible for us to say, hey, continue on with it, unless we polled 11, 12, and 13.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is he a favorite of polling 11, 12, and 13?
Even with that, I still couldn't afford to start. I mean, you're talking about removing almost 7% of the lots, that's, you know, less than the margin that I operate on. So, you know, with that, it's not feasible for me to even start, even if it was possible to remove them. So delaying three lots is actually just delaying the whole thing. Even if I would have, you know, the go-ahead for the 42, it still doesn't make it feasible, so delaying three, or delaying four, two, it, it, it really doesn't matter, it's delaying the whole thing. And then, that, you know, three months right now, had it been right in the middle of wintertime, I'd say, yeah, you know, there's not much going on, but right now, it's gonna go time, and, and I've waited a year for this, and I, I can't have any more delays.
Well, and if you lose those lots, I mean, you don't even know, I mean, like you're talking about, I mean, that's your margin there, I mean, if you lose those lots, I mean, you might not be able to afford to do any of it anyway.
I can't, I can't take the gamble.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gambling on, like, families, and everything, you know, you gamble your life savings on if there's gonna be a road there or not, so, I mean, I would hold off, I'm not gonna gamble that. Not a gambler, you know, who thinks that makes sense. I thought this made sense for the community, it's, you know, I don't know where it came from, that every one of these 45 people are all racecar drivers racing down the street where this viewpoint came in, but-
Well, they have a problem now, and they're thinking it's just gonna get worse, and I, and I get it, but I'll be the first to say that I feel like we have one of the best police departments in the state, so I, I believe that they will nip it in the butt. And it's a matter of time, when he's, when the chief has got full capacity of a police department, which I believe our next hire, you're, you're there, so, which I believe it's on this agenda, as I see, so he's got his next cop coming in, and he's full-staffed, and he's, uh, I mean, they're pretty anal about our traffic laws now, so it's, it's only gonna get worse for those speeders. But I get where they're coming from, they have a problem now, and they feel like this is gonna make it worse. I get it. But I would beg that if they, if they had patience, I, I believe our police department would do what their due diligence. I do. But I, I also get the, the stalling, but I, I, I mean, I understand Councilman Gordon's worry, I get, I get all of this, I get it all. It doesn't mean that these residents still can't go to the county and argue what they're gonna argue. I, I, I encourage them to do that. I, I guess, at this point, I mean, I made my motion, I didn't get a second, so anybody else has got a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it as is.
I have a motion to approve it as is by Councilman Gordon. Do I have a second on that one? And we're back to square one.
I guess so.
We don't wanna stall it, we don't wanna, we don't wanna move it forward. I hear you, Councilman Collison.
Just to chime in, I guess, one last time on that extra cost, I guess. You know, not only is he talking about having to lose a couple lots, but it'd be figuring out how that extra leg would get paid for in the eastern lanes and things. That, you know, if the end result isn't gonna be, he loses two lots, and has to add $350,000 or so to the total project, and the city isn't planning on participating, and, you know, maybe the residents aren't planning on being assessed on it, you know, then it's just straight back to, is the developer ready to lose two, three, a lot or two, and spend that extra money, or is it dead, you know? It may not even matter what the county says, if that's the cost involved.
Mayor, I do agree with Mr. Cook, and I think that's a good analysis. I mean, I do think if the city is, wants to entertain and wait to postpone this action after we hear from the county, I do think that the city needs to be prepared, at least to some capacity, to purchase those lots, and be willing to also add in some of that road cost to make such, make it happen. And obviously, we don't have that kind of funding allocated for miscellaneous streets to put in, something that we haven't budgeted for. We don't have extra within our capital improvement plan and for our streets budget, but I do think that is something worth thinking. That if you're gonna postpone it, be willing to take that on.
Say this, say we, we approve it as is, like Jimmy said, and then they still go to the county board meeting and stuff, and try and get that. Could the city buy lots, say, 12 and 11, and do with what we'd like?
I do think that you could purchase those lots and then dedicate it as road right-of-way, and the city can choose to plaid that and make it a road. I mean, we've, we vacated streets, we can add streets where we see warranted, pick up the cost.
I'd like to, I'll, I'll add that to Jimmy's motion, then.
So-
So-
We can, we can approve at-
Councilman Collison has the first option to buy those lots-
Yes.
And to leave those available for the city as a first right of refusal, per se, until July 6th.
Yep.
Would we say now, would we also mention the assessment on those, like we would-
Because the builder won't lose the money, because the city would purchase them, if we can get the, a road to go through there.
I don't think I could be on board with putting that kind of money into, to building that street. That, I wouldn't be on board with that.
Even if we assessed it to the residents, what do you think of that?
Well, that's true.
We wouldn't assess it at 100%, though, we'd just-
Only 25%.
For our assessment policy, it'd be 25%, we'd pick up 75.
Well, we could assess it, but only 25% of it. I mean, we're talking about hundreds, several hundred thousand dollars to put in that little access point. When was the last time, I mean, quite frankly, I mean, I respect all of you guys for coming in, and you guys are, you would not believe the difference that it makes when residents come in and voice their opinion, because it makes a huge difference. I mean, you got people that are totally steadfast on stuff, and they're just, when a resident comes in, they're just weak at the knees. I mean, they just melt like butter. And it's amazing, and it's good that you guys are here, but quite frankly, I mean, you guys have all said, we live on busy streets, and we all do, and I mean, it doesn't ruin my day when somebody drives by fast. Do I like it? No, I don't, but it's-
I don't either, and I yell at 'em, I'm with them, I yell at 'em.
My wife has yelled at people, we used to live over on, on Sixth Avenue, and she would, she'd yell at them, and I, she's nuts, I'd say, but, but, but it doesn't ruin my day, you know what I mean, and it's, it's, it's a minor inconvenience. And I know you guys wouldn't say that it is a minor inconvenience, but in my opinion, do I like that there's more traffic on my road? No, but I, I, when was the last time it really ruined your day? When was the la, and, and when was the last time we had a child that was, was hit and killed in town? I don't- On 65? So, that's the reality of the situation. I just, and I, I hate to, to say that, but I just, to me, it, it, well, I appreciate your concerns, and I thank you guys for coming in, I just really feel like you're, you're blowing it out of proportion. It's a minor inconvenience. I just, I really just think it should be approved as is.
What was Councilman Collison's motion?
He wanted to have the first right of refusal to 11, 12, and 13 to the city. He, he would approve it as is with the first right of refusal to those three lots, just in case the county came back and said, yeah-
Maybe we'd only need two. We don't know. Maybe we only need one.
Maybe we only need one. I'll second-
But we don't know that now.
I'll second-
Well, you, you don't know that now, though. I mean, you're, you're gambling.
And you're gonna spend, even if you gamble and you're right, you're gonna spend several hundred thousand dollars-
You're gonna spend easily 200,000, easily.
Well, Jason just said 300,000, plus not, that doesn't even count-
Right.
-buying the lots.
And then you're just hoping that the, the developer can split the costs with you.
That's not even, that's not even counting buying the lots.
Or you're assessing your residents 25% and we're hitting 75% of it, so, I mean, and you're hoping that you can split that 75% with the developer, or the developer's just gonna tell you to pound sand.
Was I, um, I guess we'd decide that when the, you know, I guess we, we would vote on that when the time comes, if we wanna buy the lots or not.
Well, it's part of the right, first right of refusal, we can refuse it ourselves, you know, you know?
But we'd have-
I mean, the residents would have to agree-
Then we'd have time to do-
Have to agree to assess, be, be assessed.
The builder can get going.
So, so the motion that I'm getting is we are going to let this go as, as planned, but we're gonna get the first right of refusal to lots 11, 12, and 13. Is what I'm gathering.
Correct. But doesn't mean we're locked in to buy them, but once-
Councilmember Collison, the way that, and Mayor Council, the way that it works for first right of refusal, so as he has his lots up for sale, he's going to pay to put his utilities, the street in as it's plotted and before you. If he has someone that comes up to purchase the lot, and typically, this is approved by an agreement, first right of refusal, if he had someone that was, a builder that was gonna come purchase those lots, first option would go to the city, and he would say, here's what I'm selling it for to this person, they will pay for it, you match it, and then it's yours. Otherwise, he's selling it to the other person who's inquired to purchase it.
And by then, we'd know if the county was on board.
Yeah.
Now, I, I will say, it's possible that he may have some of these lots spoken for, I don't know, that might be a question that you might wanna ask him. Otherwise, part of that motion probably, if this is the route you're thinking of going, is for staff to draw up an agreement of a first right of refusal that he would option. If, let's just say hypothetically, the county did move fast, and did say that we could put it in the road, say that kindly, and the city, and the city did choose to put it in the road, do know that we would have to do the grading, we'd have to remove the services that were stepped out there, do some capping, and then put that road through. So there is-
Some fees to that.
Some things involved in that, at a cost.
So there's more money.
But we don't have that number either in front of us, so, that's what I'm saying, if we did this, doesn't mean we're locked in.
Yeah, we're not buying it, we're giving first right of refusal, we can always come back and say-
We're giving the citizens time.
Is that feasible by the developer? Thumbs up. So, I have a motion from Councilman Gordon to go ahead as planned, and, can I even add that? He's, he's, we'd have to be a separate motion.
No, this is a separate motion, I believe, so there was no-
So you're motioning to go ahead as planned with the first right of refusal to lot 11, 12, 13?
I would, I would actually go with 10, 11, and 12.
10, 11, 12. And Councilman Burgley seconded it. All in motion, or all in favor say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. So go with that motion, 5-0. Good luck to the residents and going to the county. I would highly recommend that you go, if somebody can go tomorrow morning and at least speak for two minutes, get yourself on that agenda for the, the meeting for two weeks tomorrow, then if they can blow a road through there, or help, I should say.
Could you please add on to that motion that is for staff to draw, draft up an agreement between the developer and the city?
And to have the staff draw up the agreement between the developer and the city.
Thank you.
Second.
So a motion by Councilman Collison to go ahead as planned, have a development agreement drawn up by staff for first right of refusal for lot 10, 11, 12. Do I need to revote on that?
No.
All right. Moving forward to K... What am I on, 5 now?
Yes, Mayor, K5, from the addendum. This will be approving the development agreement for Fairway Greens North.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you is a resolution to approve Fairway Greens North. If you remember, that's the 80 acres north of Kajma. We did on April 6th, the city planned the, or approved the final plat of Fairway Greens North Phase 1. So what we're looking to do tonight is to actually approve that development agreement. Staff is still working with the applicant, or the developer and our city attorney about park dedication fees, because in this phase, they are dedicating a three-acre, three-plus acre park. So we're trying to work out with the city attorney and the developer with those fees, what the credit will be for that, and then what the fees will be. So in the development agreement, it says to be determined for those fees. We'll, we'll probably pick those up in the second phase. But also, one thing that we have in the agreement is that staff is requesting a $30,000 escrow, based on expenditures of developments' size, and also based on the amount of engineering time that's already been spent on this development, and the amount of time we think will happen on this development as far as inspections go. Because we do contract out our engineering inspections for developments, we do collect an escrow upfront. What you've seen before is $10,000, typically, that's where we start, just based on what we've seen with legacy pines, and again, with a development this size, and also based on the engineer's estimate that was provided, it's about, $30,000 is about the starting point. If we don't do that escrow of $30,000, and we do $10,000 for what the developer is asking, is us to do $10,000, then we will need to continually bill the developer for this. We certainly can do that, it does take, it's a long process for finance to do that. It also will halt the development. We will pause what we're doing until that escrow is refilled. So that's what's before you tonight. I have it written with the $30,000. The applicant has requested to be here tonight to discuss that with you.
I personally think that we don't wanna delay him anymore than we have to either, and I think he doesn't wanna be delayed. I mean, we've-
I think we've delayed him enough.
But, you know, but when he comes up and all of a sudden he's, you could, we halt him because he's gotta get back that $10,000 more, it's gonna hurt you in the long run.
What is the staff recommendation on this, Ms. Selman?
The staff recommendation is to do the escrow of $30,000. I guess that's based off the engineer's estimate, what we've seen developments' size, and what we've already spent on this development, for, because this has gone through a lot of, favorite, or, how do I say that, a lot of different plan changes. And so we have had to have engineers had to review every single set. Again, it's, it's fine if you wanna do the $10,000, but just know that we, we will not do anything with this development until that is refilled, because that's, that's how we do our developments here, we do escrows for the engineering inspections.
And Mayor Council, I'd like to add additionally that the finance director, Mr. Becker, has requested this additional escrow and funds of $30,000 because of the time it takes for the invoicing, waiting on checks, invoicing, waiting on checks, for things that we've gone through in other developments as well, that this saves a lot on staff time, as the costs are known that they're gonna be incurred.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm just kinda questioning them all. I, I asked for detailed legacy pines, I think they spent $120,000 over the last three-plus years on that, multiple phases of that development, so in my experience, if you put out $30,000, it's just, and you're not, you're not seeing any bills, so you weren't through the first $33,000, if you'll say that, we probably spent $30,000 over the first 30 days on this, you know, a 90-day project, it's like, wow. I'd kinda like to just see more, kinda have a running, you know, tracking costs, have, you know, as far as this goes, not have it be something where, you know, you put up $30,000 and you haven't even seen a bill, or haven't been able to track what's going on, so. I don't know, I would be, I wouldn't be opposed to something a little more than 10. I mean, they did $5,000 in the last phase for- I don't know. I would be, I wouldn't be opposed to something a little more than ten. I know they did five thousand the last phase for, uh, for, um, the development across town here. When they did their last phase, it was five thousand. When I reviewed that developer's agreement, it was thirty-some lots, and we're doing fifty-six, so I thought ten thousand made sense, but, you know, just kinda going on.
Is five thousand, any truth to that?
I think at the very beginning, it was five thousand. Our fee schedule is ten thousand for twelve agreements. Uh, maybe when they did the development prior to twenty-twenty, it was, could've been five thousand, but we constantly are collecting fees and holding that development up until we get those fees paid. Uh, each development agreement, um.
I only recall since I've sat in this chair, it's been thirty thousand. And then once certain criterias were met, they got that money kicked back.
Well, you're thinking of the letter of credit.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right.
Yeah, this is just the escrow that we, we actually spend this money. Letter of credit, we don't spend unless we have to. So this escrow is just, um, basically for Jason and his staff to review plans, to go out and do his daily inspections, weekly inspections. Again, minimum for fee schedule is ten thousand. Um, we do negotiate all of our escrow, all of our escrows in our contracts. So the ten thousand starting point, uh, we don't recommend going less. In this particular case, we recommend going more because of the size of the project, the inspections that are gonna be done, and just the staff time that we've already spent on this project.
I just want, this also is counsel, remember, the name that came up earlier tonight, Iverson, which the city took a big chunk of change. We ended up carrying that whole development over on that side. The sixty-five, Iverson's development, not just their area there and.
We didn't carry it, we took the hit for it.
We took the hit and we carried it.
Yeah.
We're still paying it.
Right.
So, eh, it's always been my philosophy on this is if the staff is recommending the thirty thousand, I, it's only gonna do you any favors. It's not gonna slow you down. You know, you'll get, you'll get.
I just questioned, when I seen the last developer's agreement, that was giving me a promise of five thousand.
It did, and it, and it depends.
This, I'm like, thirty thousand dollars, I was like, this seems, and I don't, I don't know if the money is. Again, I, I know.
Yeah. Well, it didn't, Ms. Selman is pretty good about saying development this size. I take what she says for, you know, quite a bit of, you know.
And Mike.
And Mike, and Mike again. You know, our staff is, you know, maybe back then, we were probably had three staff members versus what we have today. You know, I mean, there's a big difference. And, you know, we gotta look out to what's paying the bills in the city without putting anything on our taxpayers. And I, my recommendation is to go along with the staff's recommendation of thirty thousand and move forward with your plan and let you get this done.
So I have a motion from Councilman Lundin to go ahead with a thirty thousand and go on as planned. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Colson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
So at this point, if I want to sign this, I have to put up the thirty thousand. That's what we're saying. If I'm gonna go forward.
Yes, yes. So the development agreement, so, you know, you're getting the milers for the plat, we'll get that signed, and then, um, the development agreement gets signed with the plat.
And then you're off and running.
So if we don't sign it, then we don't record the plat.
Yeah, exactly. And that's kinda what I'm trying to figure out. I'd like to kinda dig into the park piece because we've given up three-plus acres for this park. And I've been, we've been trying to sort this out, and so we're saying that the county's saying the land's worth like ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars for these three acres and, uh, you know, after putting in all this infrastructure and giving up three lots. And it's just, it just doesn't seem, I know we're kinda table on that, but, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure this is a viable deal for me too. Kinda like this other gentleman was in there earlier, you know, um. I would really like to see, I, I really think that that land to me is worth, you know, the three lots, it's about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's what I'd like to base the credit out if I'm gonna move forward and sign this agreement and keep this thing moving. Otherwise, I, I think I'm gonna kinda just maybe hold off a little bit and just kinda see where, where I wanna go with this.
You have to probably talk to the safety staff. We already made our decision, so.
Yeah, so if I can just add to that, so, um, the, that park dedication, we said to be determined in the next phase, um, for that dedication, uh, because the ordinance and the fee schedule and things are, um, they're a little hard to interpret, so I'm working with the city attorney on that. And then, I know you had talked about what your value was, 'cause I'd asked you about that. Um, so those are things that we're considering, and we do have a meeting with the city attorney tomorrow to discuss that. So I did hear what you said and I did take your numbers into consideration, and so now we're just having him review it against our ordinance.
Okay, so there's no option to have that credit as part of this first phase?
No, not right now, because you didn't want to go with what I had suggested. So I took it out because you had asked for us to review that, so I took that part out. So if we wanted to do it the way I interpreted it, then it would.
I thought it was entirely what I, that's all. But that's why we made it.
Well, yeah.
So, so that isn't a part of the discussion, then that would have to. You were gonna talk to the attorney or see if it could still be part of this next piece?
Yes. Yeah, well, for Phase Two. Otherwise, we could come back and redo the development agreement at the next meeting if you want it to be part of Phase One. Because you are plating it in Phase One. I just said that the park dedication fees would be collected for Phase Two.
Yeah, yeah, maybe that's an option too. Yeah, maybe that would work, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that works for me.
Eric, guys, thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to K six, which is the Bluebird Park Performance Center.
Switching gears, thank you, Mayor Johnson and members of the council. So continuing on our conversation about Bluebird Park and the Performance Center, um, staff did receive some revised estimates, um, based on the, the project that we had spoken about with committee of the whole. Um, the allocated budget, um, in the CIP plan is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. Um, however, we have seen an increase in materials and labor costs, so, um, something that I will outline with you here. I know you haven't had time to review this, so, um, I'll try to be pretty detailed. Um, so the, uh, just going through kind of the costs here, so the unit cost will be, uh, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, that includes shipping, but does not include groundwork or construction, so we do have to go through, um, some other, uh, companies for that. Um, the installation, what we received by Jeff Busby Enterprises, um, I did actually during this meeting receive an update, um, to include excavation costs. So, um, that's seventy-two thousand, five hundred. I'm adding two thousand to that for excavation, so his actual estimate is seventy-four thousand, five hundred. Um, electrical costs are looking to be fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, inspection, grading, and testing is estimated at twenty thousand, five hundred. Um, so the, the total that we're looking for, for the Performance Center with that increase of that two thousand dollars is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand and, uh, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. In addition to that, for ADA accessibility, we will have to put in a walk, um, that basically wraps the perimeter of that Performance Center. It's, um, the walk that was on the original site plan. Um, the, uh, public works crew can install that, um, so they're estimating materials being at thirty-three hundred dollars. And then, um, as we discussed previously as well, we'll have to install lighting for safety in that space. Um, that will also help with the flooding hill. So the lighting costs, um, are at twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. So total projected cost for all of that together, um, is sitting at two ninety-eight, eight eighty-four. Um, so I do have the breakdown there, um, for you to look at a little bit easier. Um, we do have the option to pull two of those items out and delay their installation, so that being the park lighting and the walk. Um, we, you know, could delay that into next year if we needed to for the lighting installation. The walk, we would have to put in something temporary, um, and then could come back to it, so just depending on what you guys are, are interested in doing there. So, uh, staff is looking for direction on approving that increase of budget, um, which we would pull from, uh, the Fund Nine Twenty, to have room in there. Um, Mr. Becker has, uh, noted, I guess, that, um, we could increase that up to three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, uh, to cover the project. So there is cushion there, um, and then, uh, we would also like direction on project scope if we'd like to do the whole package right now, um, and then kinda finally, um, approval to move forward.
Well, Mr. Becker says he's got a way to come up with that extra funding. I, I truly, wholly, truly, heartily believe in him. Um, and there has been a lot of talk about our parks being accessible for handicap, a lot on Facebook.
Yep.
And I think that's a smart way of going. Uh, my recommendation is to move forward as complete package. So I'll make that motion.
I'd like to discuss it a little bit, but I think we just found the money for the second entrance over on Wendover. I mean, that's, that's kinda been my point with these kind of projects, is that I'd like to see us do things that are essential or possibly essential than instead of spending this kind of money on, on these sort of projects. Uh, splash pad and bathrooms and that kind of thing included, but, um, my suggestion was always that we form a subcommittee and, um, you know, have that subcommittee made up of citizens raise money, and then the city matches dollar for dollar so that we see that it's actually something that is wanted and, and needed by the community, uh, because they're paying for part of it and they're, they're voluntarily paying for it instead of just being taxed for it. So that was my suggestion, and, and, uh, and then I think that subcommittee, you know, if it, if the money is raised and the project moves forward, then that subcommittee can be in charge of making sure that there's use of the, of the amphitheater, that there's, you know, shows that are going on in there and that there's promotion of the activities going on there, so. That would still be, still be my suggestion, would we be to form a subcommittee made up of citizens where we raise half of the money for the project and the city will fund the other half.
Councilman Gordon. We never argued, argued your subcommittee. We actually said it would be a, a great idea for after the fact. Let's build it and then put the subcommittee develop, uh, together to make sure it stayed full.
No, and I, if we do build it, I'm still, I mean, I still agree with you on that, but, but I was more looking for the funding part of it, but.
Councilman Gordon, do you think it was, it could be run through the Park and Recreation Committee?
I think you, that's, that, yeah, I mean, I think you, you can't get anybody on the park board either, so I mean, if you form a subcommittee, you know, I don't know if you'll get any participation, but that's, that's my point, is how bad do the taxpayers really want this anyway? I know you've talked about moving street dances there, but, I mean, I think the, the charm of a street dance is to have it on the street to be a part of the, of the downtown and promote your businesses there, but.
Well, that was the original purpose of the street dance, was to hold it downtown, to promote the downtown.
You go to concerts in the park and you have a better public safety standpoint on it. I mean, I think police and fire would both say it would be easier, I hate to say corral, our residents, but that's what it would be essentially, is we're corralling them in the park and easier to maintain the public safety in that, and that's, that was the original intent of the whole, um, Performance Center. And then, when you mentioned a subcommittee, I was, I was on board after the fact it was built. To get it, absolutely, a subcommittee would be great to make sure it stayed filled.
Yeah, 'cause there's a lot of other things that can happen there.
Yeah.
Plays.
Weddings.
Weddings, acoustic sessions.
And I will.
Open mic night.
And I will stand behind the Park and Rec, uh, uh, event coordinator that I, I wholeheartedly feel we have the right person in that seat. That'll also make sure it works.
You could have a kids' dance, just for kids, and have a DJ there to play kids' music, you know? I mean, yeah, the, the, there's so mu, so much you could do with an amphitheater that, but a subcommittee would be the way to go, to keep, to keep those ideas flowing and, you know.
If I may, um, there are also a number of organizations that we can partner with to make sure that they're filled. So we can work with community education, we can work with senior groups. So there are a lot of things that we can put into use in that space that's not just rentals, um, and not just, you know, major public events, but ways that the schools could get used out of it, ways that, you know, the different activities that we are trying to expand in the city, um, that they can be pushed into that park.
And there'd be a rental cost, so you're gonna get some of your money back doing that.
Yeah, I mean, my overall point is with the subcommittee is just a, a compromise on it. More or less, I don't, I don't think that it's gonna get used the way that you guys do, which is, that's not a problem that we disagree on that. I'm just, I don't think that it's something that we should be spending the money on, and I think we could put it toward the liquor store project or we could put it through, you know, to, to more important, you know, infrastructure type of things that have to be done or that need to be done, but.
I think I'm in favor of this, other than I don't think it should be done this year because, um.
It's already been budgeted for this year. This whole project, we've been talking about it for how long?
I know, I get that, but that doesn't mean, then why are we voting on it? Just go ahead and do it.
Because, so it's, that's why we're voting on it, to get started on it.
Do we get started on it, or do we just kill this?
It's budgeted for this year, it was in the goals.
I think, I think, I'm just saying wait here, is all I'm saying. We got, 'cause we got the, I think, I think, uh, Councilman Gordon has a good point. We got the liquor store going on and.
And that was also budgeted for.
No, I get all that.
And planned. We've planned and budgeted for all of it.
We've also talked about how people.
Well, budgeted, budgeted for with bonding for three-point-one-two-eight billion dollars or something like that.
We've all talked about how COVID has hit a lot of people financially, and I think if they see the city building a liquor store and building a, out in that park, I'm just, I just think it should be delayed just a little bit, is all I'm saying.
Why didn't you, why didn't you say this at the beginning of the year? I'm just asking.
Because you were for it, now all of a sudden you're not, Councilman Burgley.
Well.
I'm just gonna stand, I'm, my motion still stands.
We didn't have the money of the liquor store.
Did you second it?
I did.
So I have a motion from Councilman Lundin to go ahead with the whole package as planned, and a second by Councilman Colson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Was that both of you?
Yeah.
Mayor, if I could.
Motion.
Could you please first clarify if the motion was for both resolutions, which is, because there are two, they were separated out. Um, sorry, that the first resolution is for the.
Performance Center.
The park lighting and sidewalk, and the second one is for the Performance Center. We do need to acknowledge that two thousand.
That's what I.
He said the full package.
Full package.
So it would be the cost of two ninety-six, eight, eight, four, is what he.
It'd be two ninety-eight, eight, eight, four, please.
Where's the two nine eight?
That additional two thousand.
Because the two thousand always came in a boat.
For the, yeah, for the excavation.
Yeah, I got it written down here. She added two thousand to this for the excavation.
And that, was it your motion was for?
Yes. The two ninety-eight.
Councilman Colson, you understood that?
Yes.
So the motion's gonna carry three to two. Let's move on to, do we have, we have nothing else. We're moving on to.
Consent agenda.
The consent agenda adding L eight, resolution approving the offer of the position of permit technician to Candy Conrad.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Colson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five-zero. Anything else that I missed, Ms. Wood? Oh, approval of the consent agenda.
Just did it.
That's what we just did.
Oh, we did do it, didn't we? I thought we did the, oh, yeah, I'm, anything else we have? Good Lord, get me out of here.
That is it for this evening. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five-zero, therefore we stand adjourned.
I can't even talk. I'm bored. Yes. Body breaks. Then we move on to E D eight.